I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under her eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its worth.
Thank you. We did not have a closed session tonight, so, just to let you know. Spanish translation? Yes?
Vivian Rodriguez.
Vivian?
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para la línea audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarves.
We have Andre Rivera with us tonight. Well, excellent. We have a student report. Andre, come on up to the podium here. I have a student report tonight from San Marcos High School. It's good to have you here.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Sarves. My name is Andre Rivera, and I am this year's student board representative from San Marcos High School. I would just like to take a few minutes and share some good news from this past summer and also highlight some upcoming events. Some highlights from the summer are as follows. As many of you may know, San Marcos was fortunate enough to be awarded four CIF Southern Academic Championships from this past May. Boys cross-country, wrestling, boys volleyball, and girls swimming were all given the academic championships for having the highest team GPA among over 500 schools in the section of their respective sports. This GPA is also an unweighted GPA. And what we found out over the summer when taking into account all sports and their teams' GPA was that San Marcos was the number-one public high school in all of the southern section. We are very proud of this accomplishment. Also this past summer, one of our current seniors, Ozzale Salers, was selected to and played for Team USA at the 2010 Women's Baseball World Cup, which was held in Venezuela. She was the second youngest player on the team, as Team USA was awarded bronze for their performance. We are very proud of Ozzale for her accomplishment and for representing the United States. We also found out this past summer that Santa Barbara Chapter of the American Red Cross awarded this distinguished club award to our San Marcos High School Red Cross Club. This is due on part of the leadership of seniors Manpreet Kaur and Kelsey Rich, both of whom were also awarded single-service awards. The class of 2014 entered San Marcos at 503 students strong. We had a fabulous freshman orientation last month run by our link crew leaders. Link crew leaders are juniors and seniors who are nominated by the teachers and staff for their leadership and role model capabilities for the school. They lead the incoming class through registration and also conduct small group activities to help integrate them into the high school experience. Link leaders also meet with their groups throughout the year to continue monitoring and guiding the freshmen, so they have a very successful start to their high school career. Link crew is also a great way for freshmen to see how much the school cares about them, so they can continue the royal tradition and pass on the same caring to the future incoming groups of freshmen. Some future school events you may be interested in. Our homecoming game this year is on Friday, October 8th, and we will be playing Nordhoff High School. The next night, our homecoming dance will take place in the U-Sen at UCSB, and the theme this year is Night on the Nile. We expect to have a sellout crowd of 850 students. We are very grateful for UCSB to share with us the U-Sen because of the very limited number of spaces in Santa Barbara and Greta that can hold a crowd of that size. We would also like to bring to your attention our fall play. This year, our performing arts department will put on Shakespeare's Twelfth Night. Twelfth Night will take place in our auditorium on November 18th, 19th, and 20th. Our performing arts department constantly puts on amazing productions, and this one is guaranteed to be another one. Thank you for your time, and I'm sure my next visit I will bring even more news and information to you as the school year progresses. Thank you.
Andre, thank you very much. What a, after a great start. Superintendent's report.
We sure are. Well, school and district performance reports have been released by the state. They were embargoed, embargoed, and embargoed again, but they have been released, and we have a report on tonight's agenda showing our adequate yearly progress and our academic performance index gains. We believe that the upward movement in our test scores is something that we will continue to see, and we think it says a great deal about the value of staff development, about the value of data monitoring, about the success of such programs as Avid and Read 180, and a laser-like focus on academic achievement for all students. Eighty percent of our schools are making school-wide API growth, and we will continue to work hard on meeting the needs of all of our subgroups. So you'll hear more about that tonight. This Friday, September 17th, is Constitution Day. It's a day when our schools shall hold exercises to commemorate the U.S. Constitution and Citizenship Day, including exercises and instruction in the purpose, meaning, and importance of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Investment Matters. There's a flyer on the dais here and on the side table on Investment Matters. It is an update on parcel tax measures H and I, and it is now available throughout the district and on our website. The September newsletter provides information on science, math, technology, and music needs funded in 2009-10 with parcel tax funds. This would not have been possible without the generous support of the community and the voters in this community who provided this funding through the parcel tax just two years ago. Now have additional programs that we would not have were it not for the parcel tax. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and informational items on school and district matters. A copy of the August 13 Board Brief is on display in the reception area. The last Board Brief includes a number of things, including a schedule of professional development trainings, a summary of our district's demographics, and information provided by the Yes on Measures Q and R campaign. Speaking of Measures Q and R, they are the bond measures that were placed on the November ballot by the Board of Education this last June. The measures call for $75 million in facilities, repair, and replacement bonds in the secondary district and $35 million in the elementary district, all at no change to the existing tax rate. And the November ballot will have four board candidates for our two vacant seats. The board candidates for our districts that will appear on the November ballot are Kate Parker, Lauren Mason, Monique Limon, and Dean Evans. Finally, the Katy Perry concert went well at Dos Pueblos this afternoon. Everyone had fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Any questions or comments from the board for Dr. Sarves? No? Okay. Board comments and correspondence. Mrs. Parker?
Well, I, it wasn't quite as MTV and glamorous, but I know that a number of us, including Dr. Sarves, were at La Cumbra the previous Sunday for the Del Castillo concert, which was absolutely fabulous. I had no idea, I had not heard of this band before, but it was a fundraiser for the school's arts program, Performing Arts, and if they come back to town, go. Unbelievable guitar playing. I had, I just, I don't know about you, Dr. Sarves, but I didn't have a clue what treat I was in for.
Del Castillo, Katy Perry, Del Castillo.
Yeah. I'd have to say the same, despite the cannonballs with confetti and, so. I also wanted to mention that, as a parent, I did get a really nice mailing from the district, "Thank you, Dr. Sarves," that had sort of a welcome-to-the-school here from the superintendent, information about Measures Q and R, and also the notice about activity fees that we've been wanting to have go out, and that has already generated some comments and questions coming to me. I don't know about other board members, but I'm sure that they'll be headed your way. And so I want to say thank you. I also want to note that, having three children in the district, I did receive three envelopes, three mailings.
Oh, you did. And we worked so hard to make sure that that...
Everybody got multiple copies. So I know that Business Services is working on trying to have that so that it's one mailing per family, and so I just want to bring that up so that members of the public know that we're working on that.
Maybe the extra two you could give to myself and another board member.
Happy to.
Be nice to see that also.
We'll get that to you. Thank you.
Mrs. Deegan?
I just have to say, I would have liked to have gone to the Katy Perry concert. She was an alum with my sons at Dos Pueblos, and it's great to have an alum come back and perform like that, so I'm sure the vast majority of the students there really enjoyed it, and it was, it was a nice thing for her to do. As a fundraiser too, I think. Is that right? Or...
No, it was not a fundraiser.
Wasn't a fundraiser?
It was just a free assembly.
A concert for the students. Great. Thank you.
I have two items. One, schools opened, and I hope everybody noticed that there were crossing guards on duty, and I'd like to thank publicly the city council. They did approve the memorandum on August 24th. So we did split, we are now for three years, the agreement for three years, will be splitting the cost of crossing guards with the city for the next three years. So I'd like to thank the city for working on that and cooperation with us and getting it done. It's nice to see the crossing guards, believe me. The other...
Not a moment too soon.
Not a moment too soon, yes. And I did spend last Saturday down in beautiful Rancho Cucamonga. I had a governance, governance session, learning about human resources, and I came away with the understanding that what we do for self-evaluation and what we do for superintendent evaluation are very, very good. We follow everything they advise, and we do it, I think, even better than they advise. So I was very pleased to learn that much, at least, at the, at the all-day session. Okay. Public comments.
We do have two speakers for public comment. Shereen Catipush and Cricket Wood.
I wanted to come and just take a few minutes to introduce our two new, well, we actually have three new YSS, but one is sick today, but Mary-Kate Howenstein, which, who's at San Marcos High School. She's doing her graduate work at the Santa Barbara Graduate Institute and has a background in somatic psychology. And then Mari Fulmer, who's serving at Greta Valley Junior High and has an extensive background, master's level clinician, also extensive background working with zero-to-five age populations. So we're just thrilled to have them serving on the campuses, and I wanted you to have the opportunity to at least see them. And Mari's actually teaching super tonight, so she has to scoot back out. So that's one thing. Then I also put for you, and also the table at the back, a summary of our youth service specialist services last year on the campuses. It covers individual services, the reconnecting youth daily groups that they provided, community service and outreach, and also all of the Friday Night Live, Club Live, and mentoring activities. So that's for your information. And then finally, our YSS at La Cumbra did a photography project with her students, and we've made posters out of the project, and I've put them there for you. I'm showing you three of them. We'll be developing more over the course of the year, but this one says, "My anti-drug is life." All these photos and students are, are at La Cumbra. This one says, "My anti-drug is friendship." And then this one, "Because I want to remember my life, that's why I'm drug-free."
Absolutely beautiful.
So we're thrilled. We think these are wonderful. So I put 10 of each there, so you could take them for your office, and we'll be plastering the schools with them, because we think they're just terrific. Pardon?
The students, the students.
Jen and the students, yeah.
Yeah. They're absolutely gorgeous.
Aren't they fabulous?
And the message is beautiful, too.
Yeah. We're thrilled. So, thank you for your partnership again this year.
Thank you for all that you do.
Mr. Herron will be inviting Shereen Catipush back to give a report on the latest indicators report on drug and alcohol use in our schools.
Thank you.
Is that to you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cricket Wood?
Good evening, board and superintendent. Cricket Wood, and I'm a parent and PTA member and president, PTA president at Monroe Elementary School, and I'm here to voice my objection to the policy set by the board in April of 2009 to charge an indirect fee of, on all donors, over $5,000. I first learned about this fee this August when I came back and first met with my principal, and he showed me the letter outlining the new rate of 5.96%. Our PTA runs about 60% of our budget through the school district donation account of our school in order to pay for services that used to be paid by the school district for our art teacher, our PE teacher, computer science, computer and science specialist, and to pay for busing for kids to go on field trips. These are services that historically, before our budget times, the district did pay, and the parents and community members have stepped up to raise money in order to offer these services to our children. And I'd like to offer to you that we are charged because, as we're, as a single donor, as a PTA, we are donating over that amount in order to cover those costs which you used to have to have, to have to cover yourselves. So you're charging yourself for revenue that you've already lost. And also, we are providing a service by going to the community, going to our parents, and collecting from them. We're, we have volunteer hours, we're doing all of the fundraisers and taking all those checks for five, 10, 100, $200, putting them together and giving you a single check to cover the cost of a single specialist. If all of those donors individually gave them to you, you would not be able to collect. Your accounting fees, I think, would be quite higher, processing all of that. And so for us, this is a big impact. It's equally another fundraiser, or it's 6% less time for our kids of these services that we're trying to help provide. So I urge you to reconsider that. I understand we're in a tight budget time, but it has an impact on a group that is working extremely hard to combat that as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron, we're very thankful...
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
...the support of our PTAs, PTOs, PTSOs, and various parent organizations. I believe that, that, that fee is to cover the cost of hiring people and ordering materials and delivering things, but we will be in contact. Cricket, I'm sorry, I only know you by Cricket. Your last name again?
Wood.
Wood. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. A5, acceptance of donations.
Move to accept with appreciation.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously, excuse me, with one, one absent, Dr. Noel. And Dr. Noel is ill tonight, so every motion will be with Dr. Noel absent. B, the consent calendar.
Board members, you have corrections on B1, B3, and B4 field trip.
Any to be talked about separately?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
I would like, I'll make one comment, again, on the item B15, purchase orders. There's seven of those that say "board previously approved," but only one of them has a date of being previously approved. And for me personally, I'd like to see a date on every one of them, because my request for one date ended up with a series of emails that was outlandish, and it would've just been easier if the date was there. So I'm not sure who puts those dates in there, but there's six of the seven that say "previously approved," and the one I questioned, I don't believe it was previously approved, but I won't go there.
That's B15?
B15, approval of purchase order report for the period. But there's, if you go through the, it's written, you can't miss it, if you just go through page by page of the attachment, if you have the attachment. It doesn't look like you have the attachment, but if you go into the, into the body of it... Oh, if you have the attachments, it's...
Here, you can have mine.
Yeah. It's, it's very clear. I just would, I personally would appreciate the dates being there, because I like to go back and look at what the motion was when it was previously approved, and this particular one was back in March of '09, and I think it's totally, something totally different than what was on the agenda tonight. But any other questions? Mrs. Deegan?
I just want to say, I appreciate the staff answering some questions I had on a couple of items, and, and I'm hopeful, as we move forward, that we won't necessarily always have those kinds of questions. Thank you.
Same thing. I asked several questions, got good answers, so I appreciate it.
And we appreciate your asking those in advance, so that we can research them rather than being caught at the meeting and not knowing an answer.
Any further, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Four, zero, one absent. Action item C1, approval of 2009-10 fiscal report.
Well, this is the unaudited actual fiscal report. It's the year-end closing, and it's an important report to us because it's a report on the last year's budget. Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will introduce this, and I believe Meg Jete, our director of fiscal services, will participate in the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. The unaudited actials is exactly that. It's our actials, how much money we received and how much money we spent before the audit actually validates that our numbers are absolutely correct. It's put together in the SACS format, which is prescribed by the state, and we have to show on a super summary basis revenues, expense, and transfers, and our ending fund balances in each one of our funds. One of the things that we've been cognizant of is looking at how close we're tracking our estimated actials, which we're prepared at the time of budget, versus our actials, which are our actual numbers that come in at year-end close, and we put together a variance report that shows that, which we'll talk about later in the presentation. But what I'd like to do is just kind of give you some summary findings across all the funds, and then we'll both talk about the variance report, and then, given that our fiscal condition is a little bit more improved than what we thought it was going to be at June 30th, how that actually rolls into our multi-year forecast and what kind of implications that might have for us, given that the county office of education is now asking us for a cut plan in November prior to December 15th. So we can talk about that as well. So the first thing I'd like to direct the board's attention to is just page five, and what that shows you is just basically the super summary format of the general fund, revenues and expense by the major object groupings. And there's a couple of things that are significant to note. If you look at not only the revenues and expenses on five, but actually the difference between the two, which is on the top of page six, line E, which we commonly define as either the operational surplus or the operational deficit, given whether you're bringing in more money or spending more money, what that shows you there is that basically what happened is that we spent, hopefully deliberately, our restricted ending balance down. So if you look on the restricted column, which is B, you see a significant operational deficit, and when we talk about the variance report later, one of the things that that helped us do was basically free up not spending unrestricted dollars in the discretionary objects, the fours, fives, and sixes. And so there's a couple of implications there. We've been haranguing, you know, our program people to spend those dollars first for the last three years, and they actually did it, but since they've spent from about $5 million in ending balance down to two, that means our margin of error going forward on the restricted side is very limited. I mean, we've got to even be tighter budgeting there. So as you see, you know, both the unrestricted and restricted, and then you see the difference in A plus B, which is C. And so we still are deficit spending overall, but the majority of deficit spending really happened on the restricted side, and usually that's a good indication of planned deficit spending as opposed to unplanned deficit spending, which usually occurs on the unrestricted side. So when we look at...
Mr. Smith, is parcel tax money in this first...
Parcel tax is included on the unrestricted side. The California School Accounting Manual, interestingly enough, does not distinguish parcel tax dollars from the unrestricted funds, but we segregate it per the measures.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is interesting, but it's not like we have gobs of ending balance in the parcel tax, so it really doesn't help our ending balance.
Especially since we don't spend it on just anything.
Exactly.
Very prescribed.
So if you're interested, as you flip through the next pages, you just see the revenue and expense detail in the general fund. And then when you get to page 13, you can see a couple of things which I think are significant. I think I mentioned before that we were able to make our deferred maintenance match. I, I wasn't sure what the board authorized us to do and what we could skip, so I went back, and we suspended it one year, but it was one year only, and I said, "We better make it." So we did make that. And then the other inter-fund transfer you will see there is that, when we were going through our transapproval rating, I think you remember me talking about not having any alternative liquidity, and our cash was really becoming a concern. We had enough latitude to reverse that $300,000 or something that went back to the self-insurance fund. It's not giving us a lot of money, but it gives us some, and given that we don't have any dollars hardly at all in the building funds right now, we just thought it was prudent to do that. And that'll show up in the variance report as well. As we move through the other funds, I don't have a lot to say about the charters, because we have an oversight function there, but that's about it. If we move over to the Child Development Fund on 28, one of the things you'll see that's significant is if you go down to box D, which is Other Financing Sources, and you see Transfers in, and you see the hundred and some odd thousand dollars there, that means we gave them $100,000 more this year, because, and that's on top of the 200 and...
Sixty percent.
That they were already in debt, because they have an operational surplus deficit, so not only, you know, it has not been stemmed or curtailed, so it's an issue until we get somebody in there to really manage that program, you know, we had to cough up some dollars to help them. Now, that's the bad part. The flip side is, wait till I show you the Cafeteria Fund, which is probably the bright spot in this whole thing. If we, if we move over to page 37, and you go to, actually, it's page 38, line E, when we look at our operational surplus or operational deficit there, look at that number, 804,000 they made last year. So they actually have an ending balance of about $945,000. Given that they were encroaching $250,000 three years ago, that's pretty much a, it's a miraculous recovery. So we're very excited about what's going on in the Cafeteria Fund, and we'll have to do some analysis of why that occurred exactly. We don't have all of that detail, but we're going to do some analysis, because I want to know how much of that is ongoing, because obviously we can't have that happen two or three years in a row. And, you know, there are costs that the general fund incurs relative to the Cafeteria Fund above and beyond indirect, and I hope Nancy's not listening to this presentation.
I was going to bring her into the next board meeting for an award.
Yeah. Mr. Smith, didn't we make an accounting change a year ago?
I mean, that helped. There's no doubt about it. We give them the Meals for Needy, and that's probably a big part of it, but that wouldn't be, that couldn't attribute all of it.
Okay.
So, you know, I know there's a lot of à la carte, and she's doing, you know, a lot of catering and things of that nature, but a portion of it will be the Meals for Needy.
Thank you.
So, then if we move over to page 46, which is the Deferred Maintenance Fund, and you go down to line D, you see Interfund Transfers in. That's us making our match to Deferred Maintenance, and I did notice that we're going to have to fix this in 10-11 in the budget. We don't have it there, so we're going to have to correct that by first interim. So it's hard to track, you know, when things are one time or not, and now we got to put it back in. But I think Meg's got the Deferred Maintenance match showing in the multi-year. We just have to affect, we have to reflect it in the budget for 10-11. You know, most of the building funds, you know, are oversubscribed, we're burning down our balances there. I've talked about this in the past.
Please don't use buildings and burning in the same, same sentence.
You know, whether it's our building fund, or special reserve, or capital... You know, whether it's our building fund, or Special Reserve, or Capital Facilities Fund, which is our developer fee fund, and we've got an item on the agenda to hopefully improve that a little bit. But we need a big shot in the arm there because we don't have a lot of, you know, latitude in those funds anymore. If we move to, probably the next thing I'd want to look at is going back to the variance report, which is the second to last page. And so what we've done here is on the unrestricted side, because that's what we're always the most concerned about, as long as the restricted programs are paying for themselves, you can see that our large variances in revenue was actually ma trickling in from eight, nine, which, you know, there's a significant difference in what we actually had budgeted and what actually we incurred, and there's time lag there that's difficult to anticipate. We had a little bit of a variance in revenue limit sources, other state and other local. The thing we're probably most proud of is that if you look at our variance between the estimated actials and our unaudited actials in salaries and benefits on the unrestricted side, it nets to zero. And since that's the most difficult thing to control if you don't have your position control in line, and it's also the thing that will spiral out of controlling, kill you, we're pretty happy about that.
Yeah, that, that is quite an accomplishment. I do need to comment on.
And it's not only, you know, it's Meg and her staff, Patty Pimentel, it's just constantly looking at that budget. As I mentioned before, books, supplies, capital outlay, other services, that money was not spent, and it's largely, we believe, because the restricted dollars were spent first, and it basically, it protected or freed up the unrestricted dollars, which fell to the bottom line, and, you know, we're going to end with about a 7.15% reserve. Once you get to other financing sources, we talked about this, we made the deferred maintenance match, we reversed the 300 some odd thousand back to the self-insurance fund for workers' comp. And you can see that we thought we were going to be at about 6%, but given that those things happened, we're at about 7.15%. And basically, that has some positive implications for us relative to our multi-year, because as you recall, we thought we were looking at about a $4.5 million cut. And we think that that could be less depending on what the board wants to do. So I'm going to ask Meg to come up, and we have a couple of different scenarios that probably we should talk about, because we're going to be asking for the board to give us direction on timeline and process to put together a plan for budget reductions, given that the county office of education is requiring that we submit a list of board-approved cuts along with our first interim report, which has to be submitted to their office by December 15th. Meg?
Yeah, I want to make sure the board heard that clearly.
I could say it again, but I don't think it'll be any, any more pleasant.
It was in the board brief.
It was in the board brief.
We saw that.
And we'll put it in the superintendent's report next meeting. Thank you.
It's on my desk.
Oh, I have one right here.
What do you do?
I'm being Davis Hayden tonight.
So you're going to point, and I'm going to talk?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. You're my vanna. Okay, so what we're, what we're looking at right here now is the unrestricted fund only, so the unrestricted side of the budget. On the first column, you have your nine, 10 actials. Second column, you have your 10, 11 adopted budget. Then what we did is we took our 11, 12 multi-year projections and, that we had at the adopted budget, and put the numbers in, in that column. However, we took out where it says no cuts and it has 43,000 in certificated salaries, 43 million, sorry. We took the 4.5 million out that we had in the budget at the adopted budget time because we thought we were going to have to cut 4.5 million to reach our 3% reserve. Well, we feel that since we came in a little higher, we wanted to take that out to show you exactly what happens to the ending fund balance if we do nothing.
Maybe we need to scroll down, Dave.
Dave, you want to scroll down a little bit? So as you can see, that's not leaving us in a good, keep going, Dave, please. So basically, what would happen if we did no cuts in 11, 12, we would end up with a 4.71% reserve. Right there, 4.71, which means that we would only have a cushion of 1.899 million.
And what this doesn't show you, what we don't show you is no cuts compounded over the next two years, because remember, every dollar you don't cut will compound.
Well, actually, if you go up, Dave?
Go up.
Go up. To, if you go to 11, 12, 13, which is in column P, that is with no cuts. So that goes, so we got 11, 12, all the way over with no cuts, and then we have that, whatever I had in for 12, 13.
Okay.
Right? Would have the step in column in it, but not the 4.5 million. There's no cuts in that one, too. So in theory.
We should probably go down.
You can go down a little bit, Dave. We would.
There you go.
We'd be negative. We would not make our 3% reserve.
Yeah, we'd be 2.42.
Okay?
Back up, Dave.
Okay, so what I thought I would do is, on the 11, 12 multi-year, we, we decided we would just pick some random numbers and say, okay, would you like to cut 2.5 million? If so, this is how this lands, goes, follows, falls down, falls through this calculation. So it does help us in that scenario. Then the next scenario is what we're actually, the adopted budget is projected to go negative is 3.8 million. So we put 3.8 million cuts in the certificated salary line again. And that leaves us with an 8.41% reserve, and we make our 3% with quite a bit of cushion left over.
Yeah, actually, I think under that scenario, you get a little bit of an operational surplus. You actually.
Yes.
I don't like to use this term.
Right there.
You make money.
Yeah, it's 438,000.
Right.
And you have to remember, too, that you're going to see a big jump in, when we go from adopted budget to first interim, because now we're booking all the left, leftovers, the carryover and all the deferred income and things like that. Lot of people are also going to, a lot of sites are going to start budgeting for their 9,000 accounts, their donation accounts, which you didn't see in adopted. So restricted side will go up, and some, some of the unrestricted, because we have possibly accounts receivables coming in and things like that. So there will be a jump in the adopted budget.
I think the other thing, too, is, you know, one of the things we've been looking at relative to the general fund reducing in size is, remember, your absolute dollar value of your reserve is going to reflect a different percentage against 108 than it would against 120. And so we had to keep grasping that, saying, you know, well, we cut this, we cut this, but if we have eight, how can we have 7.15? Well, it's against 108, not against 120. And so you just need to be mindful of that, because you can lose yourself in that. And so we have to keep reminding ourselves about that as well.
So what we can do here is, I can take over on the computer, and we can put any scenarios in here that we want. And I'm not sure if you want to do that, or if we want to save that for another day, or get an, give Eric and I an idea of how much you want to cut so we can bring a list back.
Is that a part of our agenda item?
Well, I, I think we need direction, but we can obviously, you can give us direction to bring it back.
Yeah, we, we will. We'll bring back an item on budget cuts, but some indication, some board direction based on this report, and this, this report is on the, on the agenda tonight, as to where we might go with budget cuts will set the stage for all of that.
Just a comment, you know, we've been fairly successful in not completely eliminating the operational deficit, but that's because we've been able to carry large reserves. And so if you look at option, I'll call it three, which is totally eliminating the operational deficit, we've never done that because it's always been too unwieldy, you know? When we had to cut six, we cut four. When we had to cut eight, we cut six. And we always push some of that forward. I'm not advocating, I'm just editorializing here. So if we did something like that, that would be closer to the 2.5. If you wanted to absolutely get a balanced budget and have revenues meet expense, that could be 3.8. Here's the other dynamics. We don't know what the state budget is actually going to look like. I'm hoping we have a state budget prior to the first interim report and, and prior to the board having to grapple with a cat list. But, I mean, there could be things that go for us or against us there, and, but we're going to have to plan somehow, you know? And it's a crazy business, but we're going to have to come up with a number and start working toward that. And if it's better, we can pull back, because interestingly enough, you'll have to make these reductions in November, and we'll have this budget, and we'll maybe have another May, a governor's budget in January, and a May revise, and so.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's nuts, but.
I should also remind the board that once we do get a state budget, if we do, we have to provide a response to that budget. And that means looking at our current year budget, means comparing it with, with all of the anticipated revenues and expenditures based on what the state actually hands us, and respond to that.
I'll ask Kate this question. Since the agenda item is approval of the 2009-10 fiscal report, unaudited actials, should we, do you think we should get into a discussion of the whole idea of, of cuts and going forward?
I think that we, it would be inappropriate to go into any sort of specifics about cuts, but it is okay to talk about the general numbers based on what's here in the report.
And that's all we're talking about, is the number.
Yeah. And not even, I would want to be careful in terms of doing any more, anything more than give very general direction.
There's nobody here.
Yeah.
In the audience who's come to talk to us about budget cuts.
Right, so we'd need to be.
It's not proposed as that.
Right.
We would have multiple agenda items, there would be plenty of opportunities.
And I should probably mention that we'll be bringing back an item establishing the process and timeline for that. And actually, I think that'll come back at the next board meeting.
So that'd be at least three.
Yeah, because we have four, we basically have four meetings left, if you don't count the organizational meeting.
Well, you, in my mind, you're going to have to grapple with, given the county's timeframe, you're going to have to grapple with the issue in the two meetings in November.
Yeah. And hope we don't have to do it in the reorganizational meeting. But it may be, too, if we can't do it in the two November meetings.
Are there special meetings? I mean, we could never see each other.
Well, I, I think you'll have to grapple with it in November, because remember, it has to be attached to the first interim and reflected in the multi-year.
Yeah, and you can't do that in one day.
No, you can't do it in your organizational meetings the day we present the first interim report.
Right.
So.
Mrs. Parker? Oh, Mrs. Deacon?
The, the letter from the county also says no later than 45 days after the governor signs his budget, right?
That's the 45-day revise. So that's separate apart. And that's what Dr. Sarvis was alluding to, is that if there's material changes in the state's budget, and hope they're materially positive for us, we have, we're required to go back and revise our budget. So all those things can happen between now and December 15th. We just don't know in which order.
Now, a bill was signed today, I understand, it releasing funds in a lot of money. How does that equate to this process?
Well, we're, we're studying that. We're not sure that's going to improve our fiscal condition because of the intent of the law. I mean, it may allow you to bring some people back, reduce furloughs, things of that nature, but unlike the federal stimulus dollars that we got in the past, that we can move expense and basically free up unrestricted dollars, we don't believe that's going to be the case with these dollars.
Mrs. Parker?
I would just say really generally, thank you. These are great numbers. Not great in the sense that I would like there to be more money, but great in, in terms of being accurate and, and helpful. So thank you. Just commenting on the multi-year projections that we have in front of us now, I would say that in general, I always want to protect services for students. And even when it comes at the expense of having a really healthy cushion, I know that we need to meet the, the three-year, 3% obligation, and I'm willing to go pretty close to that, but not below. So that's where I am on that.
Mrs. Cudelo?
I, I take that to mean the 2.5 number. Is that correct?
Well, I haven't seen what that looks like in three years. Do I see that number up there somewhere? What does two and a half look like in three years? I want, I'd like to, you know.
No, but, but I think you would be okay, because the no cut, you're at 2.81.
Right.
If in three years, you're at 2.81, then it's probably closer to zero than it is to two and a half million.
2.28.
2.28.
2.28. Mrs. Cudelo?
Well, I was going to ask that, too. I was going to request that we see a three-year projection for each of the options or scenarios that you have listed. The 2.5, to me, seems a little bit precarious, in that it cuts it really close. But jumping up to 3.8 seems quite, quite dramatic. And so I'm wondering if maybe a 2.75, a 3.
Right, that's why we have this interactive. We're going to simulate it right here.
If we could see something along those lines as well, and a three-point, a three-year projection for those, if, that would be something that we could look at.
While she's doing that, just to make it clear, the fact that you're changing certificated salaries doesn't mean that's where it's coming from.
No, the reason we put it there, and we could just.
Just want to make sure the public knows that.
Yeah, the, the reason we do that is, and we could just have easily done it in classified salaries, it sticks out like a sore thumb, so you don't lose the cuts, you know, in the fours, fives, and sixes. It's just easier to identify.
I just don't want the headline saying we're cutting millions from salaries.
Right, let's be clear about that. When we do have these on the agenda, then we'll present some menu of possible cuts, we'll take suggestions, we'll come back, we'll price those out, and then the board will go through the difficult task once again of, of deciding what cuts might be made.
Okay, we're ready to go. So what I did here is I took the 2.5 out of here, and I took the 3.8 out of here. And I put 2.75 and 3 million, just as a starting point. So then I'll scroll down, and it should all work out.
Meg, why did you put 2.75 and 3?
Just because you saw 2.5, 2.5, and you saw 3.8, and Miss Cudelo said that she wanted to see something in between.
Oh, but I'm, I think what we need to see is, we need to see, oh, 10, 11, and 11, or 11, 10, and 10, 11, 11, 12, with one number.
Okay.
So basically, we want to see what that number is as it rolls out on a multi-year basis.
Same number rolled across. Like, like, take a 3 million, for example.
There we go.
And just roll it across.
So these two numbers, back to the blue, if you could, these two numbers are linked, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then that would tell you at 2.75, you'd be at 4.77.
So if you want to see it at 3 million.
Or less. I mean, it depends, they want to go the other way.
Okay, well, let's.
Go to 2, 2.5 in both numbers. So 2.5 here and 2.5 here. And then you'd have to also change it up there, because it's going to compound.
Oh, sorry.
I think I might get one of these and carry it around with my staff.
Yeah, that would be lovely. So 1.7. Yeah, it was four, it was higher, it was 4.7, and now it's 4.5.
So we make it.
Mr. Deacon?
So that's at 2.5 over three years, is that right?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's.
Okay. And I had a couple of just quick questions. The difference between our actuals and our estimated was about one point three million. Is that where you started then?
Yeah, that's the difference. That's why it looks better.
Okay, okay. And the fact that we're incrementally lowering it isn't going to make a huge difference in that percentage of the unrestricted fund balance at the end?
No. And, and the difficulty, this is why it's as much part of science, is because you always want to guard about cutting too much because you don't want to end up with too big a reserve. But then again, you've got to cut enough so you don't get behind the eight ball and get steamrolled. And so.
And are we using some property tax estimate in this calculation, percentage increase?
I believe the property taxes were flat.
I think they're flat in the elementary.
We just got the comparison between last year and what they're estimating this year, and the elementary's going down by two, is, the growth is point, negative point two six, and the high school is planning to grow by point five nine. So we're under, way under one percent.
And are there any estimates going out three years on where they'll be then?
They do not do that, unfortunately.
Don't expect any great turnaround.
I know, I'm always half class, but full. But anyway, I, I also would be more comfortable. I mean, I don't want to come in at seven or eight percent reserves. I mean, I, I just think, I mean, we need to be prudent, but we don't need to be so harsh that we're unnecessarily harming our instructional program and our staff. So I would, you know, that four point five four is closer to where I'm comfortable.
And I just want to reiterate what I said before, that, you know, when we do the adopted budget again, I mean, when we do the first interim, that percentage is going to have to grow because now we have more expenditures. Our three percent is based on our unrestricted and restricted side. So as that restricted size goes up, so does our three percent reserve. So the more we spend on both sides of the budget, the higher that reserve must be.
What's the final line? Is that three years out?
That's eleven, twelve. I mean, twelve, thirteen.
Do we still have parcel tax money in that year?
Eight, nine.
When does the four years end?
No.
No, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Is that in this calculation?
It started in nine, ten, the parcel tax. This is our second year into parcel tax. We passed it in eight, nine, but it came effective of July one, two thousand.
So it would still be there then, okay.
If we renewed it, it would be in two thousand and twelve, but it would continue through the end of that year.
Okay.
Another thing that we were talking about doing is, in our budget, we've create, or in, I asked, I don't know, maybe six months ago that we opened in Fund Seventeen, and it's kind of like a savings account, and will appear on, on the actual general fund. It does, it populates in. But we were hoping to put the three percent reserve in a different bucket, or a Fund Seventeen, and just let it sit there. And if we had to add money to it to make the three percent reserve, we would. Then we'd have a pure working budget or operating budget in our general fund. And we'll be coming back to you to ask permission to do that.
Mrs. Deacon?
Just one last question. Because this might come up as people are campaigning for the bond, the bill, you said we're burning down our building fund. That's, if the bond passes, that doesn't necessarily build that back up, is that right? Or does it?
It would from a liquidity perspective, depending on when you issue the bonds. And basically, based on our estimates, if the bonds did pass, we would do our first series in February, February, March. And so that would.
Oh, so that, so that could help us.
Absolutely.
In that dream. Okay.
Absolutely.
Good, good.
My only comment, I think I agree with the numbers we're tossing around, but when you come up with your laundry list of potential cuts, don't limit it just to two and a half million. You give us your best shot at what's available.
We always give you more than the target.
Yeah, right, so.
And, and the other thing too, is that what's interesting about this is that if you, and you will, you know, make the, you know, make the cuts, if things improve between now and June thirtieth, you have the latitude to pull back. And so, I guess in that way it's good. We're not really happy about it as staff to get right back into this when, you know, last year it was February because that's what the board wanted. Now, we know we're in November because that's what the county, you can't get any earlier than this, I don't think. So, but we'll start working on it.
Just give it your best shot and put the, put the alternatives in front of us, and we'll have to make some decisions. And that may have a bearing on where we are on this.
We're already gearing up for phase four.
Okay. Mrs. Cudero?
Well, I just want to clarify what it is we're, what message we're giving to staff right now. So are we asking staff to come back with just a scenario for two point five million?
I don't think we are asking, I don't think we can ask. I think we're just, he can take the inference from our discussion.
Well, we're kind of giving them direction. I'm just wondering if there's value in having more than one scenario in front of us. And, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, so maybe Mr. Smith can help me with that. Is it, I mean, is, do you think it's sufficient for us in terms of our considerations to just look at this one scenario? Because as we extend it out, it seems like it will work for us, or is it better to have more than one?
I, I think, let's just for argument's sake, let's change these to two. And let's just look at it.
I'm sorry.
Can you change the two point five and the two point five to two and two?
Oh, yeah.
And then I'll editorialize.
And let me describe again why we're having this discussion as part of the year-end balance. It is because that balance has everything to do with our multiple-year projections. And where we go in the future depends on what we just discovered, that we're sitting at over seven percent right now.
So if you made two million, you see you're in pretty good shape in this year, but you're getting real close. You know, your percent.
That's scary because one point two million goes like the.
Well, I mean, the example I always like to use is last year when we thought we were done, and then we come back and the state takes three point four million away from you. Even though it's one time, you'd be under. Now, if you were in a era of economic prosperity and in a growth district, you might be able to take those kinds of chances. But we're neither. So, that's just something to think about.
Well, I actually was thinking in the other direction. I was actually a little concerned that four point five might, that we might have some.
Too low.
Unforeseen contingencies, that it might be worthwhile to have a higher percentage or a higher amount scenario as well.
Well, let's run these at three and three.
Or, or two, I was thinking two point seven five.
I don't think you're going to get to five at two point seven five, if that's what you're thinking.
Well, I, that wasn't necessarily, but okay. Okay.
I mean, we can run two seven five and two seven five and then three and three.
Go with three and see what happens.
Yeah, and then we'll know. Well, here we go. Four point seven seven. So if we went to three, which, you know, I'm not enjoying this either because I'm scratching my head how we're going to get there, but, four point nine nine.
Four point nine nine.
That's pretty close to five, round off.
Yeah.
Wow.
And what was the balance at the bottom?
Two, there you go.
Three points?
Three point. Two gets us to five point one.
Two point four.
Yeah, it's almost five two.
Well, when we see what that means and what the cuts are, it might make the decision a little bit easier. But I think you have a sense of where the board is. Do we have a motion on the main item on the agenda?
I'll move to approve the 2009-10 fiscal report.
Second?
Under discussion. I just want to thank you and your staff and all you've done to get the surplus that we had this year. I mean, that's monumental and being so close on salaries. It shows we're running a good, a good operation. And that's very meaningful when you look at what's going on around the state. I mean, we're, we are extremely fortunate to have the guidance that we have. So I appreciate it very much. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Four zero, one absent. C two, Measure H and I parcel tax site plans for the Santa Barbara School District's elementary schools.
Well, we were just talking about the parcel tax, and Robin Sowoski will give the report on what the site plans are for the parcel tax. Not all the site plans are included here, as she will describe.
Exactly. We have a, a couple of elementary schools that didn't make their, didn't have their plan ready for the oversight committee. And so they will be coming back at the meeting in November to have those approved. So you don't see Franklin, you don't see Cleveland on there. And then there are two schools, Santa Barbara High School and San Marcos High School, who are, we're, actually, they're up here with the exception of yes, because they had technical difficulties in actually getting the plan there. They were doing some adjustments after the oversight committee, and they didn't make it to our deadline this week to get it in so that we weren't passing you something at the meeting. So you will see that in two weeks. They do have their plans ready to go. I want to note that these plans are the site plans for math, science, and technology, as you can see on there. They do not include the teachers that we've bought, you know, with parcel tax funding. Elementary is the music teachers, and we have foreign language and music and art and all in the secondary schools. And the math class size reduction that we've had, recently had some conversation about. I also want to note that, I'm sure you saw how consistent the plans are as far as how they, you know, the, the way they've been put together using a template. They're all, you know, very different in the sense that the schools need different things, particularly between the secondary and elementary. But we tried very hard to get them looking in a more consistent manner. So it's easier for you to read. Do you have any questions about any of them?
Mrs. Parker?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Smith for answering questions that I had beforehand.
Oh.
Because my questions were, you know, about the charter schools and making sure that it was in district students, and that is being taken care of. So thank you very much.
Yes, I did see that, yes.
Mrs. Deacon?
I, actually, I had a couple of comments. And thank you for noting that the bulk of the money for the parcel taxes has gone to music and to staffing, because if you look at these alone, they look so tech-heavy. It's, it's concerning. We know that computers become obsolete so quickly, we could conceivably constantly be spending this money on technology. And I would prefer, over time, to see it go to more programming kinds of, of things. And I mean, there were some things that really jumped out as being, especially in the spirit, I think, of, of the parcel tax, you know, science fair kits. And there were some schools that had, in fact, used some of their money for tutors and for programming, which, again, personally, I would like to see us, after this year, start moving ideally more in that direction because I, I know we can always replace computers, but I think it could become an endless cycle, and I would worry about that a little bit. There were a few things where money was spent for furniture, and I'm not sure if that was, if that is technically really something that we should be doing with this. At La Colina, they, they bought some tables and chairs, and I'm sure they need them, but I, I'm just, was wondering whether, you know, in the future, we want to be approving those kinds of expenses.
And, and La Colina?
Eighteen tables and sixty-six chairs.
Where am I?
Thirty-eight dollars, special education.
Why am I not seeing this? La Colina Junior. Oh, it's on another page. I'm sorry. Looking at the, I was looking at the second page.
And I know that this was reviewed carefully by, and then.
Yes, exactly.
And I know it was vetted by the H and I.
Right.
Oversight committees. And so I, I don't want to quibble too much with that. And I, I mean, they bought microscopes and science fair kits, and I, I think that's terrific. I thought Luccumbras was, the format Luccumber took, and, and actually, some of the items in there was really demonstrative to me of the spirit in which, you know, I think the parcel taxes were, were passed by the public. There was for Dos Pueblos, they, they bought some laptops to special, to assist special ed teachers and I U Ps, but I thought we had used our money for that.
We have bought one for each school. Was that correct?
So these were additionals that they, they thought they could use? Okay.
I do want to note too, when you mentioned technology, I, I was just thinking of this today, not in light really of the parcel tax plan, but I was, in visiting the schools and talking to the schools, so many of our new programs in math and science absolutely are dependent on technology. I mean, even our adopted text in elementary and vision, if you do not use the technology piece, parts of it, and you don't know that well, you really can't fully implement the program. So it, it's interesting how that shifted. Of course, it's very beneficial for the students.
Yeah, and I, I completely understand that a lot of our curriculum involves these interactive pieces that we couldn't take advantage of without them. But, but on the other hand, you know, when I was a teacher, I, there was always this sense that there's always money for equipment and not for people. And, and I, and I still, you know, that still resonates with me. And so I would, I would hope in the future that the schools could, could keep that in mind when, when they decide to allocate how their expenses.
And we also, I mean, we have a lot of people within the music teachers and the other.
That's absolutely true.
And because it's four years, and we don't know how long it's going to last, in some cases, they're reticent to hire staff with that because then it goes away. But they're trying to balance that.
Yeah, and I, I very much appreciate the hard work of the, the citizen committees that, that they put into this, as well as, as the principals for putting it together.
I'm probably the wrong one to be talking about technology, because I do love the fact that we are doing it, but I have the same concerns as Mr. Deacon. If I recall, the first year, it was heavy on technology, and the comment was, we're front-loading it with technology, and the others will take place in the following three years. And I also recall a worksheet that sort of spelled out parcel tax money, what dollars were going to each of the categories. I guess my question is, have we really blown out that technology money that was in that discussions on parcel tax?
It would be.
There was a, there was a, there was a worksheet when, when the board at that time adopted, or adopted, you know, going forward with Measure I and H and I. And the twenty-seven dollars was spelled out, you know, how much for each of the categories, and technology had a portion of that. And I argued for more money for technology and didn't, you know, as a member of the public, and didn't get it. And the number was reduced. I just wonder, are we looking at those numbers to see if these are pretty close to what that intent was?
You can see on the investment matters that you have, there's a little pie chart that shows the expenditures. And you can, I mean, it says math, science, and technology. So that part is combined in the elementary as well as the high school district. There's, there's a big difference between that and.
That's H. We need to flip it over to I.
If you're going to get done, so that's probably why it's.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely right. In the secondary schools, they didn't have their site plans last year. As you recall, there was a, about mid-year, we found out, we thought that it all got spent on teachers. And what we found out was there were regular teachers that were being charged to that. And so we backed it out. And by that time, it was too late to go through the site plans. And so they've got like two years' worth of the funding on the math, science, and technology. I would be interested to see though, I, I didn't look at last year's plans to see which schools were heavy in technology and to see, compare it to this year because.
I just remember the discussion that they were top-heavy or front-loaded with technology. And this looks like it's second-loaded with technology.
It's because of the carryover.
Okay. Mrs. Parker?
I think it was about, they had about, in the elementary district, there was about double the amount for technology last year. And the, the issue was that K two music hadn't been put in place, but it was going to be put in place this year. So it's been about halved. I'm, I'm thrilled that there's as much as there is for technology since it really hasn't been another possibility for the principals to tap into. So I'm grateful for it.
Okay, do I have a motion on C two?
I will move to approve the adoption of the parcel tax site plans.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously with one absent. C three, public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Ten slash eleven.
C three, public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number Twenty-Ten slash eleven dash eleven on the Board of Education.
Mr. Herron?
Yes?
This was published in the agenda as a public hearing at eight thirty-five. I suggest we wait until then in case anyone shows up and claims they missed the hearing because we started early.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, thank you. I have a note on that, okay. And same thing, same as through for C three, I presume? Or C three and C four? And it's too early to take a break, so let's go to C five. Approval of Board of Education focus goals for Twenty-Ten, Twenty-Eleven.
Mr. Herron, we, the board has had a number of discussions about board focus goals for this current year. And we believe we captured all of those statements from our last discussion at our special board meeting on September third. So we're presenting this draft to you as a recommendation for your approval.
Mrs. Parker?
I missed the very end of the discussion last time and so in looking through this, my only real question was that very last sentence. The board will also ensure that appropriate facilities exist district-wide. And I'm not sure what the thinking was. We don't have great facilities in many ways and I'm hoping that Q and R helped that, but I'm not sure as a focus goal what the plan was to do around that this coming year.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I think I was the one who was advocating something along these lines. Because my hope was that if the bonds did pass, that we would, it would be a guide to us to spend that money appropriately and wisely. And so it was just kind of a reminder that, that we would be focusing on how that money was used. It may be overly broad, and I mean, looking in hindsight now, maybe it's overly broad.
There's no, there's no way we're going to do it this, this year, it's ongoing.
It's okay with me if we take it out unless we can find a way to make it more specific.
Mrs. Cudar?
Well, I've, also in, kind of in hindsight, but I think, given that, I think we're going to be addressing this anyways. It doesn't seem like a particularly challenging goal. Given, I mean, the challenging part is really going to probably be something we can't do. And so the part that we can do is going to be almost automatic, I think, depending on what happens in November. But, so I would just assume, take it, take it out for this year and maybe address it more substantively next year if we're in a position to do so.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm afraid of, of putting anything, because I can think of some very specific things to put in there if there were the money there, but I'm frightened to do that before November second.
Mr. Herron, I agree with the board comments that if the bonds do pass, then they will be driven and have a life of their own. Just the whole process of prioritizing these various projects, of appointing a citizens committee, of meeting with that citizens committee, making sure that these projects are consistent with the language of the bond. I mean, we'll be off and running, we've already identified some shovel-ready projects and, and it will indeed have a life of its own.
Do I have a motion?
Can I just raise one more point? Because we were talking about whether we had captured everything and on one point two, and I, maybe some of the others who were there can help me jog my memory. But it seemed to me on the second half of this sentence where we said, and increase their similar school rank by one point to a similar school rank of eight or higher. It seems difficult to go from by one point to eight if you're at two or three. So I thought we had talked about something like with the goal of a similar school rank of eight or higher, or moving toward a similar school rank of eight or higher. It's just a minor technical detail, but it seems to me that it didn't make sense.
I think the intent was to go up, it's very hard to go up one, it's very hard to go up more than one. And so you keep going year after year until you got to eight or higher. And that's the, I think that was the intent, Mrs. Cudar?
Could we change the word two to toward?
That was, that was kind of what I was going to recommend.
If you did, would you make the same change earlier in that statement about the state rank, one point toward a state rank of five or higher?
If you're asking me, the answer is yes.
I know that Dr. Hayden's not here, but I know, and Dr. Noel's not here, but I know they had a lively discussion about subgroups. And this doesn't cover subgroups at all.
Well, one of the points Dr. Hayden made was that technically we would be better off saying a three-year average, you know, when we were looking at moving up similar school ranks. Because one year is a snapshot that's not, doesn't really capture legitimate increases, but I, I don't think we need to do that. But to me, it just, if one read this literally, I was having a hard time seeing how you could get to an eight by moving one point if you weren't at a seven previously, so.
Let, let me respond to that. Because one point one does include subgroups, in fact, it's heavily weighted towards subgroups and subgroups are the bulk of that. One point two, there are really three parts to this statement. And the first part of it, in achieving annual state performance targets, does include subgroups. You'll see in tonight's report that it doesn't stop at the school-wide performance. You get a yes or a no based on school-wide performance, then when you add in the subgroups, then you get the yeses and nos again. And failure in any one subgroup results in a no overall. And you'll see that our summary report is really based on that column, that column that includes school-wide and all subgroups. And it doesn't look very good as a result, I'm sorry to say.
Mrs. Parker?
I think that the changes suggested for one point two are good. My other question was on one point five, where it says the district will strengthen career pathways. I thought at one point we had career technical pathways, can we just insert that back in again?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, now do I have a motion?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Further discussion?
I'm sorry, and that includes the deletion of the left line?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously with one person absent.
Thank you, we will get those out, we'll get them on E-News right away, we'll get them to our sites and our sites are already working on them.
Okay, we have C six, approval to cancel November thirtieth scheduled board meeting due to administrative furlough day and Thanksgiving holiday.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously with one absent.
Without the benefit of my lengthy explanation.
Well, CSBA is, actually starts the next day too, so that comes into play.
C seven is approval of the bylaw amendments to provide for regular board meetings to start and end thirty minutes earlier. And there's two board bylaws, BB ninety-three twenty and ninety-three twenty-three attached. We discussed this at our workshop session and asked that this be brought back. It's a combination of starting thirty minutes earlier and ending thirty minutes earlier, which is included in the write-up.
Mr. Herron, if this is approved, I would ask that we not enact it at our next meeting, then instead, we allow one more meeting to advertise the change and we enact it then our first meeting in October.
Okay. Mrs. Deacon?
I will make a motion to approve the board bylaw amendments to provide for regular board meetings to start and end thirty minutes earlier.
Second.
I just have one comment on BB ninety-three twenty. It's probably not appropriate now, but if you read under regular meetings, the wording, it says, we meet the second, fourth, and fifth Tuesday of each month. With the exceptions of the month of July and December. Then which there will be only one regular meeting, scheduled meeting, to be held on a date to be determined by the board at the annual organizational meeting, which is the first meeting in December. So how could you have the meeting and then determine in December when you're going to have a meeting?
Mr. Herron, it's for the next year.
For the next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got it.
This is one of those, let's keep the board on its toes.
Yes, okay. And in, in, in thinking about it for the next year at another meeting, it might be interesting to, to not have that fifth Tuesday meeting scheduled as a regular meeting, but keep it available for workshops. But that's a different discussion for a different place.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion?
Now, motion on the floor, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and starting in October, we will start at six thirty.
Thank you.
How about D one, request to speak to the Board of Education? You don't mind being early, do you? You don't have another group coming by nine thirty, do you?
Yeah, but.
They'll see it on the rebroadcast.
We're doing it with your authority.
That's right. I just get to text them and say, don't bother coming, and they go.
Good evening, board members, thank you for allowing SEEK this time to speak with you this evening. On August eleventh, SEEK was in attendance at the open house at Cleveland Elementary. We had our own little table and we passed out information on autism from the Autism Society of Santa Barbara and answered questions about SEEK and about the school district and the new advisory group. That was an outstanding event, let me tell you, there were like about two hundred parents there. I mean, the auditorium was packed and I was pretty impressed. On August seventeenth, Seek held their first summer meeting at the Tri-County's Regional Center Annex. And there was a discussion of upcoming events, teacher trainings, and goals for the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven year. Must be something about goals tonight. These goals will be discussed a little bit further at our September twenty-first meeting here in the district office. On August eighteenth at eight thirty, we had a parent workshop at Cleveland School on autism. Thank you to Kirsten Escobedo for attending and also to Sandy Shove for, of the Autism Society of Santa Barbara who did the presentation. It was presented in English and translated in Spanish by the Cleveland president of PTA. There, we all felt it was well-received, there was lots of questions at the end, and I counted over thirty parents in attendance. Additional inclusion and awareness presentations will be taking place at many Santa Barbara School District schools now that our new school year is underway. We're working with the PTAs in each school to set up these presentations the next few months to spread the word about inclusion. As I previously stated, we're working on the SEEK goals for this new school year. So I wanted to let you know that these goals will touch upon community disability awareness and ability awareness. Other goals will address the support of students during transitions from preschool to elementary, elementary to secondary, and secondary to adult living. There will also be parent and community outreach via education and inclusion and collaboration with other agencies to promote positive and inclusive environments for children and adults. Continuing to offer support and success to our special education staff will also be an ongoing goal. Several articles have been published in our local papers lately regarding the failures and the successes of the Santa Barbara Special Education Department. The one thing that never fails to astound us are the comments from the community at the end of these. The parents of the SEEK have begun to notice a disturbing trend in these comments. So we're dedicating ourselves to educating our community of teachers, leaders, business owners, and parents in order to inform them of the rights of special education students and the responsibilities of our local, state, and federal agencies. We respectfully request that you, the members of the Board of Education, review your current goals for the upcoming year that we're facing and have faced in our special education department. While we appreciate the additional comments at the end of your board goals, we feel that a goal regarding the oversight and accountability is in order. SEEK feels that this action would send a message to the community at large that the board members have committed to improving our special education department, both because it is the law and because it is what's right. We also wanted to reiterate how much the parents of the SEEK are looking forward to continuing our collaboration with Dr. Mills and her staff. And we congratulate them on the beginnings of what we hope will be a very successful year. On another note, we ask that you keep the Verdine family in your prayers and thanks to those of you who attended Nina's zoo party. In closing, the end of all education should be surely be service to others. We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about the progress and prosperity for our community. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include aspirations and the needs of others for their sake and for our own. Cesar Chavez. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you for all the continued cooperation and aspirations and for everything that you're doing, we appreciate it very much. Board, it's eight thirty, or almost eight thirty, do you want to take a, like a ten-minute break and then we'll come back? Try to get back a little less than ten minutes. C three.
Sorry, yes, we do. Paul Zink.
Hello, board. Thank you, my name is Paul Zink and I just have something really brief to talk about. In the report, there's a comment, first of all, I'm a hundred percent for the developer tax and how it's being used and the increases, it's justifiable and all that kind of stuff. I have one little minor tweak having to do about the wording. And in the actual body of the text, under section four, paragraph B, it talks about new residential construction or residential reconstruction involving increases in habitable area. And that's what's important is if somebody was to tear down an existing house and rebuild a new, larger house on the same property, they're only paying the developer fees for the increase in habitable area. And what I want to bring to your attention is in paragraph two and paragraph four of the actual resolution, it talks about including fees on new residential construction and certain reconstruction. And I'm wondering if the word certain reconstruction could be changed to increases in habitable area, which is mentioned later in the report. So if David or staff can make reference to that, I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody. And that's my comment.
I don't know if you all follow that or not, but if you go to Resolution Twenty-Ten dash, slash twenty-one eleven dash eleven, in the second paragraph, third line, after Education Code one seven six two oh, including fees on new residential construction and certain reconstruction, that certain reconstruction is his question. And two paragraphs down, it's used again in the third line. And then if you turn the page and go to four B, it talks about residential construction or residential reconstruction involving increases in habitable area. So in one section, it just talks about certain reconstruction, another section, it goes a little bit further and sort of describes it. And I don't know if Mr. Hat Young has a thought on that. Is, my only concern is in the first use, is that what the, is that what the Education Code actually spells out, certain reconstruction?
Thank you, Mr. Herron, the actual codes speak to not charging a fee for reconstruction of a residence that was damaged as a result of a natural disaster, fire, flood, earthquake, something like that. That's, that's what the code is specific to. At issue was the fact that previously, this district charged a fee for reconstruction of existing area if the house or property had not previously paid any developer fees. That is legal to do, however, it was not addressed in our previous study. Based on Mr. Zink bringing that to our attention and having legal counsel review the item, legal counsel agreed with Mr. Zink that we should not charge a fee on reconstruction of a residence, period, of the existing square footage. We would only charge if something was reconstructed on additional square footage. And that was based on the fact that that study did not address the issue. This current study does not address the issue, so we would not change what we do. However, the legislative code specifically only speaks to not charging for reconstruction of area if it's destroyed in a disaster. So we currently do not charge for that and we, and we would not in the future. I spoke to Mr. Smith about this earlier, because Mr. Zink had emailed us on his comments and concerns. and concerns, and these resolutions were prepared by counsel who have expertise in developer fees. They weren't prepared by Dr. Kennedy, who is here, who is the author of the, let me introduce in a second, in the back of the room, we have Dr. Richard Kennedy, who is the author of the study. These were done by counsel and Mr. Smith basically thinks that the resolution should stand as is, and our practice and our understanding and our advice from legal counsel on what we do that is more stringent than what the code requires is the way we operate. In addition, when you say "certain reconstruction," that "certain reconstruction" could also be if a development or house or square footage was commercial and was being rezoned or changed to residential. Then that would be another change issue that would need to be, you know, individually be looked at. So the main issue is that we do not charge for existing square footage that is reconstructed, whether or not developer fees were previously paid on a remodel. We only charge on any square footage that is in excess of an additional 500 square feet. In other words, if you remodeled your home and you added 490 square feet, you would pay no fees. If you remodeled your home and you added 510 square feet, you would pay developer fees on the 510, going back to the full amount over the existing. That's our current practice, that's our current guidance from legal counsel, and we did not ask Dr. Kennedy to address that issue on our developer fee study, so we had no plans on changing how we operate.
Any? I'll close the public hearing, if there's no other comment, I should have done that earlier. Okay, now, any comments? All that we just said, that was part of the, Mrs. Guerrero.
I just had a quick, very minor clarification. You said that the state code says or requires that we cannot charge developer fees for reconstruction due to a natural disaster.
Correct.
Does that extend to additional square footage?
No.
Okay, so even if it's being reconstructed for a natural disaster, we can charge for additional square footage?
Correct, correct, yeah. Unfortunately, the legislature specifically addressed this issue, but did not specifically address the other issue, but per legal counsel, we would not be, or we shouldn't be, because of the way we do our studies, we shouldn't be charging for that because we did not indicate that in our study, and we did not plan on changing that.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I'm going to say thank you, especially thank you to Dr. Kennedy, because I can't even remember how long ago it was that this originally went out to a different consultant and it never got done. And it's a huge relief to finally have this before us for action, so thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Hatt Young.
I would like to say, it's, you know, I've read a few developer fee studies and I think this is one of the better ones that we've had. We haven't had a new study or request increased fees for 10 years, and we were pleased with this issue. And hopefully I answered Mr. Zink's concerns and I'm sure he may want to say that he would have the same concern over both resolutions for both districts, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but I would assume it applies to both. Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt Resolution Number 2010/11-11 of the Board of Education of the Santa Barbara Elementary School District, increasing school facility fees. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Guerrero?
Well, I just want to say that I think Mr. Zink's concern is well taken, and so I don't want to seem like we're just ignoring it. I feel comfortable that it can be handled within the existing language, especially since the concerns are in the "whereas's" and the "therefore," which is really what identifies what we intend to do, spells out that it's involving increases to habitable areas. So I feel comfortable, but I don't, didn't want to just act on it without explaining why we're going ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and vote for it in the way that it currently is.
With Mr. Hatt Young's explanation, and I do recall seeing a legal memo on that topic, and I think I have it in my file, and that makes me feel a lot better, too, that there's a legal opinion on this topic, so.
And Mr. Zink had emailed me earlier and I answered that email, and I probably didn't answer it as clearly as I should have, and I answered it the second time, and so hopefully he is aware of the fact that the district does not plan on charging for that type of square footage.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously with one absent. And C4. Oh, open public hearing, any comments? We'll consider Mr. Zink's comments at C3 the same, and explanation the same, discussion the same. I'll close the public hearing, hearing, no comments? Any discussion or comments? Do you have a motion?
I will move that we adopt Resolution Number 2010/11-12 of the Board of Education of the Santa Barbara Secondary School District, increasing school facility fees. I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously with one absent.
Mr. Herron, I'd like to thank our consultant and thank him for being here. I'll bet he thought he was going to do a big stand-up presentation, and he did such a good job on the report that it wasn't necessary.
Thank you very much. Okay, in going back on the agenda, it looks like we are now at D2, report on, I'd like, do you have an introduction in the audience, like, since she's here sitting?
We do have Monique Lee Moon with us tonight, yes.
And you are a candidate for school board, so thank you very much, we appreciate you attending. D2, and all our meetings are just like this, we're really, we cut through it fast, yeah. D2, report on federal adequate yearly progress, No Child Left Behind, API, and PI. And I think there's a, an additional attachment on our, on this item, D2?
Yes, actually, it is simply the color attachment. So, this is a report that's prepared by Dr. Davis-
Excuse me, this is much more detailed than what's in the agenda.
Oh, is it?
Much more-
Okay, very good.
I believe it is, anyway.
Well, go with the colored attachment nonetheless.
Maybe, okay, maybe it's not, okay, I'm sorry, it probably is the same.
This is a report prepared by Dr. Davis Hayden, and I see from the time that I have until 10 o'clock, so I'd like to go over this in great detail.
The schedule says you have 20 minutes.
Oh, but that's starting at 9:40.
You could wait if you want, but we're going to be out of here before the, I think.
Okay. Well, we're pleased to present these results to you. I'd like to have someone bring up the PowerPoint for this. Mr. Hatt Young, if you could bring up the PowerPoint for this. And I'd like to lead you through a couple of these tables. The first tables that you will see are those tables that show the overall results from the Federal Accountability Program. The Federal Accountability Program came to us through No Child Left Behind, and what we're seeing is a report of adequate yearly progress, it's a percent of students who are proficient or higher. And you see the change at the elementary district, and you see it over six different data points over a five-year period, both in English Language Arts on the left side, from 41% to what is now 50, over 50%, and you see it in mathematics as well, now this is district-wide, from 40% up to, what is that? 56%, 56.9. On the table on the next page, you will see the same columns, and I'll bring that up. I think I'll bring that up, maybe I'm too far away. Dave, why don't you bring that up?
Good, thanks.
Go ahead. So, the table on the next page shows that same column, it shows school-wide results, and it shows how we were doing, and it's in this column, it shows how we were doing some five years ago, and where we are now. We're pleased with that progress and we expect that progress to continue. But it also shows that not only district-wide, it shows us for each of our subgroups, for Latino, for white, for socio-economically disadvantaged, for English learners, for students with disabilities. And what you'll see in this last year is that this percent of students who are proficient or higher is the highest ever. It's higher than we've ever seen before for our district-wide results, for our Latino students, white students, socio-economically disadvantaged students, our English learners. Our English learners have made tremendous gains from some 18% up to 33%, and particularly our students with disadvantages, from some 10% up to 32%. Those are tremendous gains. And I will show you in just a moment the difference between the gains of Latino students over that period in time and white students over that period of time, because that is what we refer to as the achievement gap. You see the same thing shown in mathematics, you see where we were at 49%, and we're now up to 56% district-wide in mathematics, 56.9% of our students who are proficient or higher. And you see on both of these, you see the state targets. Now, No Child Left Behind set targets that jumped up some 10 percentage points a year at this point in time. They started very slowly, now they're shooting for 100% by the year 2014. And you can see that this target, for instance, in mathematics, has now moved up to 58%. And the actual state average is at 56%, so it's below that target. We are also below that target, and we are below the, I'm sorry, the target for the state is the same. We are below the state level in our elementary district as well. And you'll see that the target continues to climb, so that the following year at 68%, almost no one in the state will make this. I mean, schools across the state of California will be in program improvement or identified with one mark, simply because the target is rising so rapidly. Let's go to the next page and talk about what we see. This is the achievement gap on the next page. You see the, let's see, one, two, three, four. You see eight different data points for a seven-year run on the performance of our white students and the performance of our Latino students, but this doesn't show any longer the National Accountability Program, the Federal Accountability Program. This is showing the API growth scores, and these API growth scores are the adequate yearly progress, I'm sorry, Academic Performance Index, adequate yearly progress, academic progress, and soon you're in PI. The Academic Performance Index, and an Academic Performance Index is very different from an adequate yearly progress indicator. The Adequate Yearly Progress Indicator is simply the percent of students who are proficient or higher, it's a very simple target, but it gives no credit for all the students below that line who are at basic, who are far below basic, and so on. And it gives no credit above that line for students who are not only proficient, but who are advanced as well. The API, the Academic Performance Index, gives points credit for students in each of those categories, and in fact, it's even weighted towards students who are in the bottom categories. If you're able to move students up out of those bottom categories, you actually get a little more credit in the movement of scores than you do at the top end of the scale. The scale itself runs from 200 to 1,000, and the state target right now is 800. The state is finding that so many schools are at this target level, half the schools in the state are at this target level, and Jack O'Connell on his way out the door is saying, "Well, let's raise the target. Let's raise the goal here." But our white students are performing very close to the top here, this would be 1,000 right about here. Our Latino students have started way back at this point at 650, and if you look at these trajectories, if you make these straight lines, this and this, with this being the average, you will see that these trajectories are virtually identical. At the elementary level, we are not narrowing the achievement gap. Well, let's go to the next page, see what that shows us. Here for, again, Academic Performance Index, this is the state accountability model for students or for schools on APIs and for districts on APIs. You'll see that the base score is shown for the entire elementary district, and that base score is in compared to the actual growth. So you can see we made growth this year, we made growth this year, we did not make growth this year, we made a little growth this year, flat this year, tremendous growth this year, and great growth this last year. So the big bump here is in these last two years. What you cannot do is take a look at the base back seven years earlier and compare it with where we are now, it doesn't work. The state recalculates the base each year, and the only way you can look at these changes is to look at it this way and see, oh, this is plus 22 points, this is plus 8 points. And then at the end, we've finally arrived at 782, which is below the state API of 800, but we will get there, we're on track to get there. We see the same gains among Latino students and the gains among white students in these categories. Our Latino API in the elementary district is up to 752, and we're at 863, is that, or 8? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, that's the state, we're above the state, we're at 915. So we are below the state average here compared to the 752 state average, we're actually the 730, and the 915 is above the state average. Well, let's go to the next table. And you can see a summary of the individual schools. The first category is this federal adequate yearly progress, and you can see that the yeses and nos are not just school-wide, they include all of the subgroups. And in order to make our board focus goals, you would have to get a yes for school-wide and all of the subgroups, so these would all have to be yeses. You see also two columns here that are from the State Accountability Program, the API score, and the API with a, with the growth from last year looks very good when you look at this sort of value-added approach, looking at where we were a year ago and where we are now, you see some schools that have made tremendous gains here. McKinley made a 48-point gain. You see Franklin that made a 32-point gain. You see Cesar Chavez, we're very concerned about Cesar Chavez, we sent a consultant in to work with the school this last year, they made a 30-point gain. And you can see that some schools have not made much of a gain this year and have even dropped from the previous year. Here we have Monroe, Community Academy, some of those schools have performed at very high levels in the past, we're not so concerned about a school like Washington that is now over 900. In fact, we have a number of schools now that are well over 800. When I started in this district, that was virtually unheard of, Washington was just hitting 800. Of course, that was many years ago. And you can see the program improvement status of each of the schools, some have been frozen, some have a mark against them, but virtually all of the schools that could be identified as going into program improvement or already in program improvement are.
My question is on Washington, in the past, it has not taken Title I, but I see that it's got a mark one against it.
And, and Washington will not go into program improvement. It does have a mark against it.
But it's an NA like OAS and so on.
It really is an NA. I'm sorry, I asked Davis about that and he's offered to correct it. Oh, oh, very true. There are a couple of schools that, that have shown such tremendous growth, like a McKinley School, that if they were to show that growth again this next year, they would no longer be in program improvement. And when principals were taking a look at the board focus goals, it was the principals who said, that's the significant progress we think we need to be targeting. And that significant progress, which is called Safe Harbor by the federal government, is significant enough to show that the school is making great gains and would not be in program improvement in, in one more year at a couple of these schools.
Mr. Herron, if I may?
Mrs. Parker?
I, just a clarification on Cleveland, because I thought that last year was year one for Cleveland for PI. Is that correct? Because I think Adams and Cleveland went in in the same time, so it's frozen year one.
I thought so too. We'll take a look at that.
But it is so, I just want to chime in, since you brought up Safe Harbor, it is so incredibly difficult to make Safe Harbor two years in a row.
Yes, it is.
I, I want to give a shout-out to our principals that are making progress, especially if they're making progress over multiple years. Because I, I have been so impressed with some of the work that I'm seeing. And it, I just don't want them to be so discouraged next year, since it's, it's almost like walking on water to, to make Safe Harbor twice. So I'm, I'm pleased with their progress.
Particularly when a school has made such tremendous gains in just one year's time. I mean, they could have made half that gain had been in Safe Harbor and saved the other half for last year. But they would not do that.
Cleveland, Mike Vale's been very strategic.
Yes, yes. Well, you can probably remember a time when McKinley was well back in the six hundreds. We were very concerned about McKinley School. We've seen big changes at McKinley School. That staff is working in a very different way. I'd be very happy to have the principal come and talk to you about how they made those gains. And, and I've reported on that in the superintendent's report. But I think it's very instructive and it is very instructive to our other principals and other staffs as well. Well, let's go to the next page. Oh, yes, go right ahead.
Dr. Service, I'm concerned about Monroe. I'm sure we're all concerned about Monroe. With the decline in being in year one, have you, do you have any, have you had comment, conversations with the principal there to?
We've had preliminary conversations with all of these principals. In fact, we started in August, on August eleventh, meeting with our principals for a two-day period. And we went directly into what we knew based on AYPs and percent proficient or higher.
Likewise, and maybe even more so with Community Academy.
Yes, that had to do with this column and with this column. And as you know, we had some leadership issues at Community Academy, but we've installed a head teacher who we have tremendous confidence in. So we think that that will really turn that situation around. And, and more important than our having confidence in that person, the staff has tremendous confidence in their abilities and their being able to work with that person. So I think that'll make all the difference.
Mrs. Parker?
Just a quick question. We have two year ones here, Monroe and Roosevelt. And then I know that there's a year one Dos Pueblos in the secondary district. Have the letters gone home to parents?
Yes, we're taking care of all of that. We have, we started out with the open enrollment piece with our schools who, who had, well, they were already in program improvement. And on top of that, the open enrollment. But now that these are newly identified, they've been getting the information and all will help them with that.
In fact, let me comment further on open enrollment, because the state identified early on the lowest performing schools in the state. And the former Cesar Chavez School was one of the lowest performing in the state. That has undergone just a huge transformation in, in terms of the, the vision and format of the school. And you were all a part of that, so I don't need to describe that further. But two schools, Franklin Elementary and Harding Elementary, which are the lowest performing schools here, were also identified as, by the state, as open enrollment schools. So when we sent the letter out to the parents, the, the traditional program improvement letter describing what program improvement was and why the parents had the option to transfer, we also told the parents that you have, the school has been designated an open enrollment school. And you also have the right to opt to transfer to another school district. And school districts are scrambling to define their capacity. And I don't expect many of those districts, many of those neighboring districts, to grant many of those based on their capacity. But we have told parents that. And I have talked to the other superintendents of the other districts. There are, a couple of them have already passed their capacity policies. And we'll have applications available to us. We've told our parents, you can come in, get an application. You have to submit it to the other district. You have to submit it in December. And the other district will tell you whether you're accepted or not. And that's all prior to our traditional open enrollment and early enrollment period. Someone else had a comment, yeah?
Mrs. Deacon?
It's skipping ahead to secondary, but since we raised the issue of Dos Pueblos now, will we then be notifying, I mean, if all the high schools are in program improvement, then there's no longer an option of transferring out of one into one that's not, correct? So at some point, we're going to have to address that.
We, we did maintain Alta Vista as one of the options for parents. And really, we don't have other options, so.
Right. But so, so that now eliminates that as a potential reason for transferring from one of the other two high schools to Dos Pueblos.
Yes.
That should make things simpler next time, right?
Yeah, it should make things interesting, shouldn't it? Let's go on to the next page.
I'd like to comment on Adelante. When you consider all the happenings the last year to go up thirty points is a tribute to their staff and to their principal and to the expert we brought in to help them through that process. You know, all working together, that was, that's a considering. If they would have done that last year, we wouldn't have had that whole discussion, you know? So it's the fact that they did it, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, when you see these big changes, I mean, we're very proud of this. This is all about teaching. This is all about kids learning at higher levels and good teaching. I mean, there's really no other way to explain it. There are a lot of, of attenuating issues attached to that, like using data, testing students frequently, some of the programs that we're using. But it's all about teaching and learning. Well, let's go on to the secondary.
Mrs. Cudero?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, just because we were commenting on Adelante, I attended the board meeting for Adelante last night where they were sharing this news about the increase in the scores. And of course, everybody in the, you know, in the, in the group was extremely excited and happy to hear that. But what I thought was much to their credit is they, you know, they acknowledged it and expressed their great appreciation for it. But then they kind of went on with, okay, now what's the next thing we're doing to really make this even better? So they are really committed to continuing those increases and even, you know, making even further increases. So I, I really feel that they're on a great roll.
Thank you. In fact, you'll be invited to the ribbon cutting on October first at five o'clock. Let's go to the, at, in the secondary district now. The secondary district includes junior high schools and high schools. And we've seen tremendous gains in the secondary district as well. You know, when you look at it year to year, it goes up, goes down, goes up, goes up a little, goes up a lot more. It's only in looking at it in the scope of over a seven-year period, there are seven different data points here. I guess that's a six-year period, that you can see that there are tremendous gains here. Again, No Child Left Behind, Adequate Yearly Progress AYP. The percent of students who are proficient or higher from some fifty-three percent, well up over sixty-five percent. We'll see the actual numbers on the next page. And we see that in math as well. These are our district-wide results. So let's go to the next page and see what the actual numbers are. In that first graph, you saw this fifty-two point eight up to sixty-six percent in English Language Arts. And you saw over those seven data points, you saw this forty-seven percent up to eighty percent. Is that an eighty percent?
Sixty point five.
Sixty point five.
Sixty percent. Sorry, I wanted it to be eighty. Okay, forty-seven percent of sixty point five percent. You also see the gains in percent proficient or higher among Latino students from twenty-five up to forty-seven percent. And what you will see here is a significant narrowing of the achievement gap. You will see that while our white students continue to make good progress and we're proud of what we're accomplishing with that population, our Latino students are making greater progress. And you can see it year by year over the past four years that they have gained tremendously. And I'll show you a picture of that in just a moment. Again, these percentages are the highest percentages that we have ever seen with these populations. And when you compare where we were at eighteen percent with where we are now at thirty-eight percent, it's a, it's a tremendous increase. You also see the state targets, the state target at fifty-six percent, fifty-six percent here. And then the state average at fifty-five percent is well below where we are in our secondary district. So the state was just barely above where we were in the elementary district. And the state is making gains as well. And we're, we're pleased that we're playing with other districts that are making gains. And, and that's, it's a fair competition. I mean, it's the kind of thing we want to compete with. And you see that these targets bounce up so that we're going quickly to sixty-seven percent the following year. And to go from sixty-six percent up to sixty-seven percent can be a difficulty. We'll see. Let's go to the next page then, because you see the trajectory here for white students. This is the achievement gap. And you see the trajectory here that would, if it were on the same trajectory, would be ending up about here. And you can see what's happened over the past four years. You can see tremendous gains among our Latino students. That is a significantly narrower gap between white students and Latino students than this was some seven years ago, this, these eight data points earlier. That's something that we've been working on and working on quite constantly. These gains are things, when you saw this last year and we were hoping that that's what it was showing, this year it certainly is. So let's go to the next. Here we have the APIs. Again, we have these rebased every year. And, and this last year, we have bounced up over eight hundred. It's been a tremendous increase at the secondary level. And as you will see in a moment, almost every school has contributed to that. So we're very pleased with that. We are over eight hundred in our secondary district. Our Latino API is at seven hundred eighteen, which is actually above the state level. Our white is, is considerably higher than the state level, some fifty points higher than the state level. So let's go to the actual schools. Again, here's the Federal Accountability Program. You have to make every, you have to make the school-wide target and every subgroup target. And we have missed subgroups in these. So only one school has made all of those targets, Santa Barbara Junior High. There are actually, I, as I recall, something like twenty-two points of failure. If you fail to make any one of those goals, then this shows up as a no. You know, people at school sites don't think that's very fair, but that's how the law is written, that's how the federal rules run. And that's what we're playing by. You can see the result of this and the program improvement status at each of the years. And there we have the year one, year two, year three at the, at the high school level. Now separately, here's the state accountability program. This is API growth, again, from two hundred to one thousand. And you can see a lot of schools, district-wide over eight hundred, Galita Valley over eight hundred, making fourteen-point growth, La Colina over, well, well over eight hundred, making twenty-five-point growth. Lacumbra, as you recall, Lacumbra went from something like six hundred forty one year to about a seven twenty, about a seven sixty to eight hundred. And they've fallen back a little bit this year. We're not concerned about that in any way. We think Lacumbra will continue to climb. And Santa Barbara Junior High, here's the All-Star that we saw in the evening news. It, it was consistently on each segment in front of Katy Perry. It was that important. And John Beckio and, and the staff at that school was featured for the tremendous progress that they've made. And then you see the progress at each of the high schools. Every high school made gains on APIs this last year. And we're very proud of that. Unlike this AYP, which is based only at the high school level, only on tenth grade scores, this API is based on all of the California Standards Tests that are given at the ninth grade, tenth grade, and eleventh grade level. And we think they're, they're making tremendous progress. And so we're very pleased with the results. Let's see, was that the end of this?
That's the last one.
And it's been, well, a little over twenty minutes. I took liberty with time. Yes, Mrs. Parker?
Mrs. Parker?
I just, I know that it was, I mean, obviously, I'm so excited for Santa Barbara Junior High and, and Mr. Beckio there. That was just so exciting. And their staff, I mean, the work that those teachers have put into it there. I'm, I've just been so impressed. But I know that teachers at Santa Barbara Junior and Dos Pueblos tremendously excited also to tip over eight hundred, because those are the two schools that did that. So I, I just think that that's wonderful. I, I also really wanted to give a shout-out to one of our feeder elementaries, and that's Galita Union, because I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at their scores. But just amazing growth. Their Latinos, where our elementary district is now at about the seven thirty average, theirs is about seven ninety. They're almost at the eight hundred level for Latinos. And those are, they're elementary students, they're our junior high students as they go into Galita Valley Junior and to La Colina. And I'm really hoping that we see that difference in our junior highs and high schools as that moves forward. And I hope that we collaborate with their superintendent as we talk about, you know, what made a difference there. I would love to bring especially what they've done for Latino students at that district to ours. And I just love to hear what they think the most important things were. Because we're heading in the same direction, but it feels like we're maybe a couple of years behind.
I met with that superintendent yesterday, and I'll have breakfast with her tomorrow. I mean, they really have worked on these. And I'm very pleased that, that you acknowledge that, because they have made tremendous gains. When you look at the schools that are not in program improvement in Galita, it's just tremendous.
I actually think it might be worthwhile for us to get a board presentation from her specifically on that area, since it's a feeder.
Thank you.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I, I have to just concur that it's, it's really exciting to see these gains, especially some of these really big gains. And I'd just like to thank the, the team, the teams that work together at the schools, the teachers who've worked so hard, the principals that have shown leadership, because I think that when they work, when everybody works together, it's when we're going to see these kinds of gains. I, I can't help but think that NCLB is becoming more and more irrelevant as we see how, how that really fails to, to, first of all, reward growth. And yet then we see with, with the API that schools really are And yet then we see with the API that schools really are benefiting from the tests that measure the standards. And so I'm heartened by that as well. We still have a long way to go with our achievement gap. And I think we can't all help but look at that and see that we would really like that trajectory to keep going and to move and accelerate faster. And it has to really happen at the elementaries if we want to see it move all the way through. And there were some disappointments there. So I guess hopefully success continues to cultivate more success. And that we see people, as you mentioned, at Adelante really taking heart from having done well. And I don't think anyone's resting on their laurels. Everyone's working hard. But we need to keep on, keep it up.
Do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Although, well, can I make a comment first?
Do it now or after? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I just also wanted to say that I think the schools, especially the schools that have made such tremendous improvement, really do deserve to be proud of themselves. And I'm glad that we are taking the time to acknowledge them. Because I think it really reflects everybody. It reflects the principals and the administration on the sites and at the district level, but particularly on the sites where the principals are really working. But it also reflects the incredible hard work that the teachers are doing in the classroom. And even the classified staff, the aides that are in the classrooms. I just think that a lot of these schools have created such strong teams and have taken such an approach of, sort of a whole-school approach to improving the performances of their students, that it can't help but sort of permeate how the students are feeling about it as well. And so I just, I hope that the schools and the teachers and the staff all understand how incredibly proud we are of what they're doing. And the fact that we truly understand how hard they are working to accomplish this.
I think Dr. Sarvis mentioned that he and I went out to all of these schools that made really great growth and talked to each one of their staffs, and other schools as well, but particularly those schools, and congratulated them and talked to them about, asked them what they had done. So that was very exciting.
Okay. Public comment, Lane Wheeler.
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association, thank you. I hope the television audience is bigger than the audience here tonight to, there is an audience here tonight at least, to share in this great news. It is exciting. I'm hoping that the board does not look at what they've done over the last five years, cutting $25 million out of the budget, and say that was the secret to success, because I'm pretty sure it's not. And reflection on Mrs. Parker's comments about Galita Valley, they have been in basic aid for a number of years, sitting on a $12 million reserve. It's, I think, easier that they've been able to keep their class sizes small. And I know there's not a lot of studies out there that indicate that's a great moniker for success, but geez, what do we find? Galita Valley, Galita School District, small classes, higher test scores. I want to call out very specifically McKinley School. McKinley is a QEIA model, and I don't want to pat my organization on the back, but I will. CTA was at the backbone of that legislation that got passed through. And basically, what that legislation said was provide professional development, lower class sizes, empower teachers to do the things they can, and really work with data to try to drive that thing, those kind of test scores up. And that's really what we're seeing here. So I think that's an essential part of also all this. And I really appreciate Ms. Deacon and all the board members acknowledging the work that the teachers have done. They've got a great collaborative staff with the CSCA folks. But when we look at this day in and day out, it's those teachers in the classroom that are making the significant difference. And I want that to be at the top of this discussion. It's the kids who take the tests, but it's really the professionals that are out there every day doing this job that have, I think, really turned the corner for us in so many ways. SBTA has looked very forward to working with the district, and I think we've made some very progressive movement collaboratively when we look at waivers that have been passed to allow the school day to be changed and altered, to provide the teaching staff to have time to do those sort of things. And we look forward to continuing that partnership that we have. And I think that's another piece that I would also put out there as one of the reasons we are seeing good success. So let's keep it up. Let's stop cutting money out of education, pass some bonds, and move forward in November. And hopefully, we'll have some good news there, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
You'll share that with the governor and legislature, too, right? There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, there's no question. Everything you read these days, the emphasis is on teachers. If you have good teachers, you're going to have good results, period. And that goes for principals and the staff, too. If all that combination works, all we can do is stay out of their way. Let them do it. Any further discussion on D2? Let's move to D3. Yes?
I just want to, I just feel like I would be remiss if I didn't make one comment. We are rightfully highlighting those schools that have made tremendous improvement. But I certainly don't want to imply that if, that the schools that didn't make as dramatic of improvement are not working as hard. I think everybody is working very hard. The teachers at those schools are also working incredibly hard. And in some cases, there are different factors that influence what the scores are. In other cases, maybe they just haven't had as much time to implement programs or changes that they're putting into place. And certainly, we want all of our schools to be making the greatest improvements that they can. But I don't want to in any way suggest that schools that don't have as dramatic of numbers are not working just as hard to try to serve the students.
Okay, D3, first reading of board policy, 1321. Solicitation of funds from and by students.
Robin Swawski, our associate superintendent, will make this presentation.
Okay, this is a result, actually, of a discussion about this. And Mrs. Parker mentioned earlier tonight in the letter home to parents noting to make sure that parents clearly understand about the, that this is free, you know, it's free and you don't, you can't, how you solicit funds. So in the discussion on this particular board policy, we were, it was Mrs. Parker mentioned that we had that line that's crossed out, that individual schools will determine how best to distribute this form that goes out to parents. And the original thought in putting it there so that it would not go in the annual parent packet, will avoid going in there, was that it would be highlighted somehow. But in the discussion, it was pretty clear that that's when you actually look at things. And when they come separately, they often get lost. And so as a result of that discussion, I'm suggesting that we strike this unless there's another way to do it.
Mrs. Parker?
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And the other key piece was the idea that individual schools will determine.
Right.
That made me realize that really needs to come from the district. And I don't know how many of you saw, the ACLU has been paying attention down in San Diego County around this, but they have now actually filed a lawsuit against the state of California, because California, it's just so big of an issue, and they're not enforcing it at the school sites. And it made me feel very positive, like we're one step ahead of this lawsuit by starting to get that organized. But there is a lot of confusion and concern at the sites about, you know, both on the parent side of like, really, you know, what about things like after-school classes? Well, if it's run by the PTA, that's not the school. And athletics, and I think that there's a lot of clarification and a lot of concern around this. And so the district still needs to step in where there's been practices that are not in compliance. It's great that now parents kind of know their rights if they've read this, but we still need to make sure that those rights aren't being abused in the first place. So it is something that we're going to need to pay attention to.
I think probably what we need to do is just keep coming back to it. In our first principals' meetings, we had separate elementary and secondary last week. And Dr. Sarvis brought that forward, at least to the secondary one. And I mentioned it at the elementary one. We didn't spend as much time at that one. We, I will schedule it to come back when we have either a joint principals' meeting or a management meeting when we have the assistant principals in the room as well, because they're often running many of those programs that could be in jeopardy of breaking this.
Yes, and I see it really is much more of a secondary issue.
Yes.
Although certainly, all of our elementaries, including our charter elementaries, need to be very aware of this.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just agree that I think there's so much confusion because it's done so differently across the state. And people see abuses in other districts and, but may not realize that that's what they are and think, whoa, we can do that, too. So I think the piece of just informing people and making sure everyone really, everyone understands is really the key.
Mrs. Cudell?
Well, I want to go back to what you just said, Ms. Swawski, about the fact that, including the assistant principals. I would even love to see us have a district-run meeting with some of the directors of the programs, some of the people who actually do this. Because I think, you know, people have good intentions, but it's very, very difficult. There's a real disincentive to make it really clear to parents and students that they don't have to participate in the fundraising or, you know, pay for certain things or et cetera. When that stands, your program stands to be hurt by not collecting those funds. So as much as people are, you know, well-intended and don't want to violate the rights of the students and the parents, it's hard for, I can understand that people could be in an awkward position, sort of trying to decide how clearly they want to present that information to parents. So I still unfortunately hear from a lot of parents who think that they are required to raise a certain amount of funds. We still have some, you know, we have programs where students have accounts and the fundraising goes on their account. You know, so it's a little tricky. And I don't think, and I absolutely agree, that the parents do not make a distinction often between the ones where there can be fees and the ones where there cannot. And so I think it would be really, really helpful to make that as clear as possible.
We've been spending time with our administrators on this, particularly secondary administrators, where there are just a lot of groups who will go to parents and say, oh, and we need this and we need that. And the San Diego materials are particularly instructive. For example, going over with principals, the court rulings on this and the fact that voluntary contributions must be voluntary. And specifying, for example, an amount, a desired amount, or a timeline, or showing of names, or an explanation as to why you can't pay that amount makes it nonvoluntary and violates the law.
So as far as the lawsuit issue, you're assuring us that we're not violating in that way that the lawsuit has been formulated?
Every time we hear of something that we need to follow up on, you know, we find out. So I think it just demands diligence on our part, and it demands that we have our ears open to hear any complaints or any concerns and find out what actually is going on in each case.
I would like to get a copy of that letter, and I'm sure all of us would like to see it. The one thing that sort of is interesting that I found out just recently is my grandchildren are, you know, asked to solicit for things. And in two cases, back in Connecticut, we wrote a check out to the school, because we didn't want the paper. And my daughter-in-law returned and said, no, you can't do that because our grandson won't get credit. He's got to sell so many packages of paper. And so they put the kids into it. The kids become the pawn. And here locally, another situation, not with our school district, but it's candy. And we said to our daughter, we'll just give you a check, turn it into the school. No, you got, our kids have to sell candy, you know? And it's pressure using the kids, and yeah, they get a ribbon, they get a certificate, they get drawings, they get prizes. And you can't just give money to bypass that because then your kids don't get the prizes. So there's some inner thinking there that you'd better participate, because then your child, if you don't, your child's going to get ostracized for it. So I think that's got to be careful. Mrs. Deacon?
I think it's important to inform the parents, too, because unfortunately, unknowingly, I think the parents become advocates of this. And it's not always district staff that's certainly asking for the money, it's parents. And with the best intentions, but the pressure sometimes is there for people who may not be able to donate.
Mrs. Parker?
And getting back to where we are violating the policy, it's fundamental is PE uniforms, where, you know, I've had three years in secondary now where I have never once been told this is a voluntary contribution, and you can pick your amount that you're going to contribute, and you cannot contribute, and your child can wear. This is the first year where after the fact, after I bought the PE uniform, the PE teacher said, your child does not have to wear the uniform. Two years in junior high where that was not the case. And, you know, that's something that hits every ninth grader. So.
I went through, I watched the registration at one of the high schools, and as they went through the line, one of the stations was buy your PE uniform, here's so many dollars, and here's the price. I didn't notice if there was any disclaimer, but it was right there at one of the stations.
There was not.
Okay. Good, oh, that's the first reading, so come back to us. Okay. Anything more on D3? Let's go to E. There are no consent items to go back to. F, coming events. We have back-to-school nights for the secondary district coming up, I think. And I presume we'll get an updated list. I noticed on the E news, it just said, contact your school to find out when it is. Any future agenda items? Mrs. Parker?
I've got a couple. One, I hope, is already being planned for, and I hope for the next meeting. And that is talking about the teacher bill, the new R money that's coming. I know that it's about $800,000 for the elementary district, about 1.8 million for the secondary district. And it may not help the budget in the long term, but we need to have a plan for that money. And so I'm hoping we'll be discussing it by the 28th. Because I think it's being released.
People are asking.
Yeah. And anything that we can do to help for this year, I definitely want to do, and certainly for next year, too. And then my other question mark is, do we want to talk about Proposition 19? And do we want to take a board discussion, have a board discussion on whether or not we want to have a resolution for or against the legalization of marijuana, since this board took a pretty active, had strong opinions about dispensaries, and had recommendations for the city council on that? I don't know if we want to have that discussion.
I would like to have it.
Okay. Well, then my suggestion is we put that on a future agenda item for before November 2nd.
Any others? Okay. Well, we will adjourn at 9:45.